Good evening, everybody. You're here for a work session meeting today is Tuesday, July the 21st at 6 o'clock. We'll stand up, do the pledge of allegiance and get the meeting started. A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We'd like to honor a moment of silence to honor our military, firefighters, sheriffs, deputies, and road workers as they serve our community here and abroad. Thank you. Tracy, clear, uh, roll call, please.
Trustee McGlaughlin.
Present.
Trustee McGuire.
Present.
Trustee Mann.
He said he'd be here in about 10, 15 minutes.
Okay, first thing on the agenda is old business. And on the list is choice one engineering discussion, OPWC grant received. Okay, so we got turned down on a grant back in the day, remember who that was, I was. And, um, so we decided we need to have work done and we put an RFP out. We some work due on every road, we were gonna do the work for, um, grant two money, issue two money, we didn't get. And we awarded the resolution 20-035 to JA Construction. And, um, they didn't take the job. Do you wanna make a comment on that? I mean, I know in the last meeting Jim, he said that he probably was sabotaged. We weren't really sabotaged. JA Construction did work up and I asked him if he was here, but he's not here, at Devon Clay Township. And, um, after doing that job under Steve Wolf and Clay Township, he will not work for Steve Wolf again. And, uh, Steve Wolf is part of Jefferson Township, so he won't do the job.
It's not what his letter said.
Huh?
That's not what his letter said.
Okay. That's what I heard. What does the letter say then?
Why don't you have it at the meeting and tell us on the record?
Let's pull the letter out and see it.
At one point in his letter, he said, he didn't believe that our money was any good and he was afraid to work in Jefferson Township.
Okay, good enough. So how did we go from JA Construction to Brewer Asphalt? How did that happen?
Brewer Blacktop.
Brewer Blacktop. I mean, it wasn't done in an open meeting. Um, I called them today and asked them and they stated that, um, Steve Wolf and Jim McGuire gave them permission to proceed. Is that true?
I'm not answering your questions.
You're not answering my questions?
That's what you said. Move to adjourn.
Adjourn? We gotta step on the agenda. They're not gonna talk anymore on the agenda?
Move to adjourn. You're not gonna have a corner when I walk out.
Well, nobody agreed to adjourn the meeting, so we can keep going. You gotta get a second? And when you're not voting on anything, you're just discussing.
We're just talking about it.
No, you're playing games.
Not playing games, it was...
So Jim left the meeting at?
So Jim leaves the meeting at 6:05.
Okay, so is there anything else we might discuss or discuss?
Well, I hear.
I know nobody's here, but we still can have a meeting, it could still be recorded, correct?
Uh?
We can still have a meeting, it still can be recorded and whoever's not here can hear the recording.
Yeah, Roy will hear if he doesn't see one.
We can wait on him or if you want.
Don't have to warn a presence, the meeting can't continue.
There's no table, there's no, uh, nobody, three seconds to the gym. Do you wanna pause the meeting until, um, Mr. Mann comes?
Well, we can, well officially, officially the meeting's not happening, but I'm not... I made several phone calls today. Tracy, I know you were over there quite a bit at the county center. I didn't, I got a voice message on the top dog, um, in the situation, but the county owns the county center and I've been told by numerous people it is no longer closed. So I would ask you why we can't open up our offices over there and conduct business.
So I did talk to Mr. Mann and that, and he just doesn't want the building opened. So there's a possibility he might want to talk to Mr. Mann.
Okay.
And find out because he made me direct him out.
Okay.
He's, he's terrified of opening the building, basically.
Terrified, terrified of opening, I mean, if you open a building, you still, it's not like...
I'm, I don't mean the building, I mean our offices. Because we don't have any control over the building. He just doesn't want the public in our offices. Because there's nothing we have control, we don't have any control over the building.
Well, we can, we can conduct a policy, we could have business where, um... So you come in the first set of doors and you communicate, hey, I wanna talk to so-and-so or, you know, I need to conduct this business. We need to have a, um, just like you and us would do, so, like, okay, so if you contact downtown and I need to talk to the building inspector, you make an appointment, you go downtown and you meet in a room that, you know, you're wearing your protection, you're working, you're wearing your stuff, and when they get done, everything's clean. So, uh, I understand about not being in the offices, but why couldn't we set up a, a table in that conference room, not use it or something, someplace? We've gotta be open to the public.
I, I agree with what you're saying.
Okay, so we'll just, I can only, I'll talk about that, so...
Okay. Oh, but I know what I do when, um, that's Tuesday. Have, you spot talked about cleaning and we got that money and we gotta use it. And I know that you have been asked to use your vendors. Have you looked into anything for, I know you got stuff here, but we need stuff over at the county center.
Yeah, I'm, uh, Mr. Wolf was supposed to find me, uh, some vendors about, uh, cleaning the building. I haven't seen them yet, so I could take a look.
That's good, but what about the hand supplies, the mask?
Yeah, whatever you, yeah, we can give whatever you, just tell them what you can get.
Yeah, I, I guess I can give you the list, but I was wondering if you wanted me, was there anything that I can do as far as getting monitored with a mask, gloves, whatever?
I mean, we can run it through us and then just reimburse us back.
Okay.
Chad ever give you the, uh, but you better check with everybody else.
Are you, uh, are you having that delivered at this point in time or are you going to someplace and getting it?
Uh, they deliver. Yeah, we order our stuff, they just deliver it here.
Okay. So we could probably hop on that same, if I get approval, we'd hop on that same train?
But we need, yeah, what we need to do is, uh, does Chad ever give you the reimbursement for the other stuff yet?
No.
What we could do is buy it through the fire department because we'll get a little bit of a discount, being it's fire department, and then, um, just whatever, with the CARESAC money, just reimburse us as repurchase. But you need to talk to all three trustees, I'm not getting in the middle of it.
God!
I'm just bringing it up since they, the president, and he could bring it to the trustees.
Are we having a, um, audit meeting with the secret? Were we supposed to do that?
No, 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 I postponed all of, all of this quarter because, um, because I...
That's right, that's what, we did do that last meeting, you're right, okay?
Because all this going on and we just missed this quarter a lot of it. And the only thing was, I was gonna try to discuss with the audit report.
Do you guys know Jack John, John Calibert will be here tonight?
I doubt it because usually he didn't come to the second meeting, he usually only will come to the...
He was on vacation the first meeting, right?
Yeah, and usually they tell him not to come to the second meeting.
Oh, I've got some legal papers I need to give him, I'll give them to Steve then.
Oh, there was some, uh, somebody called me and I don't know if they called you, but they did the cutting of property, or somebody, some of the properties, they do all this cutting and doing, and somebody called me and said that their parents, classmate of mine, plus my sister of mine, called, uh, called me and said that they cut their parents' properties and sent a bill for five hundred some dollars. Well, one thing is, I thought they put on a property tax, and the second thing is the property is mostly cement. So what did they cut on the property? This is what I was told, I don't know for a fact. So I haven't been able to ask Tony about that and I haven't called Tony, but I'm...
Well, you're supposed to get, you're supposed to get notice, give you the chance to get yourself.
Right.
And then if you don't do it, it's an hourly rate, but, yeah, you got to ask Tony.
So that's, that's my question, I asked, did you get a notice? Because I know that they posted a daily court report, but, but you got a bill and you didn't get a notice, so they knew it was your property and they sent you a bill, why didn't they send you a notice? So I asked her to check to see if they got notice, but I also have to, to call, quote unquote, the enforcement office.
For five hundred dollars, she could hire a, uh, landscaper to cut it all summer and then have somebody left over.
So, I, you know, I don't...
So, um...
But I'm getting calls like that and I, I'm sitting, I'm sitting so unfortunately because, you know, they're doing my cutting and property.
Gene?
Yes?
Does the name Monte Siller, do we need anything to you?
Silas. Monte Silas.
No, it doesn't ring a bell.
They didn't have a company name, Monte, though. No company name, we got a fifth, how much is it? Twelve thousand, five hundred dollar check of cash?
Yeah, I have a friend of mine, I know.
If you don't know the guy.
And he would put it right up to you, it said Jefferson Township trustee.
No, I'm fine. I don't know who.
He's a good friend.
Yeah, he's a good friend of hers.
We, we're trying to figure out why, you know, where the check came from and why. And I guess Steve's gonna be here at the next meeting, I guess you'll have to bring it up during that meeting.
Did it say anything with, was there a letter with it or anything?
Oh, I got, was a check stuck, stuck in between. The second bill that I got sent right here, you see this? This is what Steve gave me today. All the invoices he's been on for the last two and a half months.
Why didn't you show up to the work session then?
Fifty six, he lists fifty six invoices.
Fifty six invoices in one day?
Right, and, and I didn't give them to him like that. I didn't give them to him like that, so I, I, I have a complaint about that. And I don't know if I should address that at the regular meeting or not.
What's that?
Should I address that during my, um, before we look at it?
We have, um, two people want to sell this property. Just to, I mean, we're talking about a meeting, but, um, I don't wanna talk about, wanna talk about the work session. There's a person, um, says we own two vacant lots on Taff and they wanna sell their house. They paid forty-eight thousand for it in December of eighteen. We don't want it. Uh-oh, innocent!
I'm not catching, right?
I'm acting.
It's a resident still, isn't it?
You're doing good.
Thank you.
So, it's, it's...
So, um, we have, in that potential group, we don't know about that, you could ask about that meeting?
Well, you know, I would think we should have asked the head.
Yeah, me too.
But nobody cares. So Mr. Mann's here now. Mr. Mann shows up at six fifteen.
Yep.
Can we, we can go ahead with the meeting now?
I'll tell you after.
Okay.
Jim wants the other meeting, Mr. Mann, just for you, all right?
Why? Go down with, let's make some waiting again. Probably got someone representing this.
We asked him a question and he says the meeting adjourned and he says you don't have a forum and you walked out. But this is just a work session, we're just working some issues out. So we have this discussion on the third...
Get your folder, get your folder?
No way, but...
So it's over the county?
Probably, yeah, probably.
You need to work county?
I'm sorry, I'll write one back.
Uh?
I'll get a...
Okay.
Was he outside with you guys?
No, I didn't see him. Tracy on the board?
Do you wanna...
Yep. So, there's some things we need to talk, talk about, we're gonna open the meeting back up, we don't need to do the pledge of allegiance and stuff, and it wasn't really as efficient closed because we didn't have a forum and now we do. So, um, on the agenda there, Rory, um, was to, you know, we did the pledge of allegiance and we had a moment of silence, did roll call, um, do we wanna do roll call again?
Well, just...
He already said he came in at six fifteen.
Right.
Okay, so we were talking about choice one engineering and the OPCW, WC grant, which is issue two money. So, you know, we didn't get that and we ended up having a contractor do that road. I've driven it both ways several times. I don't know if we had any inspections done on the work while that was done. I know I've seen it was, there was parts that were taken down to gravel, only asphalt was taken out, I don't think that was done for the whole thing. I don't know how well that's itemized on the bill. But, you know, I, I don't wanna pay for this four hundred and some thousand dollars issue two money, this grant, and then have that taken back out. You know, have you driven it? What do you, what do you think of the road as of now, Rory, I mean?
Hey, some of the work that was done, they're, they're gonna go and give us credit for some, we don't know how much, but we're gonna get some credit for that. Maybe, I, I, I don't know what that means.
So, I think we need to get that in writing, that, um, if you're going down the road and here's a part that's already been patched, go around that and don't tear that back out. Is that what we're saying is gonna happen?
I don't think we wanna do that, we wanna leave it up to the contractor to fix the road, to make sure we fix. Now, if we've done some work on the road and they've said that it's good, then they will give us some credit for that.
Well, who's gonna make that decision, what's good and what needs?
Uh, I'd say probably it's gonna be maybe whoever's looking over this for us and the contractor. But that, that should have been brought up, uh, that they know that we, you know, that's the work on that road.
I have, in the, in the invoices, the stack of invoices I got from?
Yep.
Steve, by the way, it's a man, today I got fifty, sixty invoices from Steve through Adrian, um, to pay, that's about two and a half months. He lists at least fifty-six of them in here. I didn't give them to him that way, but in this stack of invoices, Brewer Blacktop, he gave me their estimate, gave me their W nine, which I needed, um, to write the check. But what I don't have from you guys is a resolution that you guys approved then to do this work, so I still can't pay this bill. Until I have a resolution that was approved that says you approved Brewer Blacktop to do this work.
Did we do that last meeting?
We did that.
No, we got tables, remember?
No?
No, we, we...
No, I'm, two yeses and a no, you got, you got, um...
Well, I'm gonna still tell you, it was done after the fact, so I'm gonna go ahead...
Well, I agree to that, I hope you know that.
I'm gonna go ahead and prove it, but we're gonna get written up really bad on that. So, I do have, like, again, I do have the estimate and I do have the invoice and when I go to Sydney's out, um, you probably got them from Adrian, you, uh, I know you did, Mr. Mann, you got about five or six, maybe seven emails, and then there's gonna be this estimate in that. So you probably got them, 'cause I know it was addressed to me, you, and Steve, she sent all of, she scanned them all in and they gave me the hard copy. And here there's a note that says, C.C.'s, S. Wolf and Roy Mann, hard copies to Tracey. So you got these, all this stuff.
Okay.
I still did not get the RFPs from, was it one more vendor or two, for Ann?
Yeah, I, I didn't get the, uh, make contact, I had been calling, but, uh...
'Cause I need to have that to go with the resolution, I forget the number you said it was, twenty oh forty-six or whatever, whatever it was, oh twenty-six?
The one for JA, approving JA back in the day, um, that was done on May 5th, is 20035.
Okay.
Awarding it to JA, and then last week, last meeting two weeks ago, um, giving it to Brewer Blacktop was 20-054.
Okay, so I need to have the data that goes with both of those and I have the data for Brewer, but I don't have the one for JA. I have to have that for the record. So sometime we need to get that, but, um, anyway, there is a written up summary in here and I could send that to you.
Okay, please do.
For what Brewer said they were gonna do. But it looks like what I've written, they, whatever mail and bill name before they put the Blacktop on, they did all the mail and brushed up all the gravel and did all that. So when you were just addressing that, that's what it says, you know, so I'll send that to you. I just, again, I just got all this today and I just write like at two, two-thirty or something, and I haven't had time to do anything with this. So it's gonna take me a minute to go through all these invoices. Which brings me to, well, talking, this brimming through, I was flipping through these invoices, I found a check that I gave the copy to, to, um, uh, Trustee McGlaughlin. It was a check for twelve thousand, five hundred dollars, dated April thirteenth, the cashier's check. So I'm, I looked up my cashier's check and I said they're waiting for it today, now bank can't for the day, so I went on to the deposit, so right now they accepted it. I don't, I don't know where that check's been for, what, three months? Almost three months, oh no, it's three months. Where's it been? I don't know, but it got, it was stuck in between the bills, so I think it was perfectly stuck, stuck in there.
Do you know who, what it's for?
No, I have no, no, nothing in this, in the stack, I went through that stack with the check. And I think it was that copy and the check, I passed the check and no explanation. Do you know Monte Silas, um, is that his name, Silas? Do you know Monte Silas, Mr. Mann?
No.
No? I don't know who, who that is, but I, it's written to you guys, it's written to Jefferson Township trustees, so I have a deposit to that.
Okay.
I don't know who it is and why, April thirteenth, you know, why, why it just not getting? Now, you know, I understand if somebody misplaced it, but that's actually, cashier's check is actually cash, whether it's on a piece of paper or not, that's actually cash.
Yep.
The auditors are gonna write us up really bad on that. They're gonna look at the date and say, why did you just not pass this check? So cashier's check is actually cash.
It was stuck within, it was stuck in your stack of invoices?
Yes, it was stuck in between. In fact, matter of fact, it was stuck with the Brewer estimate and the Brewer bill in between those. So, you know, I was concerned that maybe somebody volunteered to pay for the road, but nobody, there's no indication that's what that's for.
I mean, it's, it's, I, I was thinking that, that's, that's about the amount we get periodically from our, um, cable, our franchise money, but that would have, that wouldn't be a cashier's check.
No, we already got that, we already got two of them, so that's not...
Who sends you to put that kind of money in, not a sense of document, there's nothing else in the envelope?
I'm thinking that somebody got that paper, if it came in the mail, somebody's got that paperwork, opened it up, got the check and the paperwork, and those are what that check is for.
Well, you should even call the person that...
I don't have a company or anything.
I mean, if bank doesn't care whose name is on it, whoever gave that, PNC?
It's a cashier's check, it came out of their account, but how do I find out who Monte Silas is? Do I call to PNC and say, who is Monte Silas? Are they gonna tell me that? And give me his name and I'm gonna know? So I'm assuming, since it was in the bill that Steve gave it to, so Steve should know it was in these bills, he should know. So I had a concern about, this is what I was talking about, about the process that was supposed, should be following, that I should get all the mail that comes in and then I should give it to Brewer should need to go to. If you want Adrian to stamp it, that's fine, but I should get it and I should pass it off to the people it needs to go to. And if it gets to the wrong person, somebody needs to let me know, know this should go to so-and-so and I'll check, and I have no problem with doing that, but at least I can keep track of our monies and our invoices. Because I'm sure I haven't gone through these invoices, but I am quite sure, I got some invoices in there that didn't come through me, it went directly to Steve. I'm quite sure. But I really have a problem with getting this like this. The, the fire department has no problem, as soon as I can get them, send them an email, five, three, two, how many ever, not that many, I don't send more than seven at the most, bills almost every day, and he gets them back to me. Why am I getting fifty-six invoices at once? You know, that's the question I have, I'm getting fifty-six, almost definitely more than he just numbered fifty-six. That was just in one folder, I have two folders here. I only, I only gone through that folder and this again was just a glance of what's going on, and again, Mr. Mann, you got an email with all these, I'm sure, 'cause I saw them, there were seven emails, she had to send them a separate, seven separate emails, they were so big.
It Googles Monte Silas in the Dayton area is the owner of Brewer Blacktop.
Wow, so is he rebating, is he rebating this money back? That's probably what I was stuck in, in between Brewer Blacktop.
Why would he be paying us? But it's, it comes up, contact information, he's the principal owner, uses his address and his phone number? Well, that's weird. Why would he be paying us? That sounds a little shady, that sounds a little shady to me.
Let me see what this W nine said. Yeah, that's what it's under, the W nine says Monte Silas.
Yep, so I just, I just Googled his name.
Yeah, forty-seven, forty-seven fifteen Dayton Grand Road, but I don't know why.
Did he, did he turn a, uh, a bill in a different amount?
The bill...
Well, that was dated April 6th. The check.
Yeah, the, yeah, the check, this is before they even did the work.
Yeah.
The bill was sent on June 30th for a hundred and twenty-nine, seven eighty-four. The estimate was sent a hundred and twenty-four, eight ninety-eight. That's still not twelve thousand, five hundred dollar difference.
How, how much is that, how much is the bill?
The bill, the invoice they sent me was one-two-nine, seven eighty-five. The estimate was one-two-four, eight-nine-eight. But again, these both, the four-ten, April 10th was the estimate and June 30th was the invoice. So that's why, so now that answers why this check was stuck in between us, but it doesn't answer why I need that information, why...
If they're gonna give me that job or this little cash, I'll give you that, give me that work.
So are you gonna call, uh, Brewer?
Um, do I have, you, you have a number for Brewer, right?
I'll give you his number.
There's no number on here.
Five-three-seven, two-three-five, six-three-nine-five.
Okay, so I'll call him and ask him what it's for. Okay, so that mystery solved.
I, I was telling, I, you know, I was telling Jim earlier, I guess one of the reasons he left, um, I asked him, I called Brewer today and asked him, who gave them notice to proceed? Who gave, who awarded them, contractor gave a notice to proceed, and he said, he said Steve Wolf and Jim McGuire. Who gave, who ordered the contractor giving a notice to proceed, and he said, he said Steve Wolf and Jim McGuire.
And then you asked Jim, did you do that? And he said, I'm not asking a question, meaning adjourned, and he wasn't.
Yep.
And that's when we had to wait until you came, so we just discussed something further.
Okay, so we discussed whole business choice one, do you have, anybody else have any more of the whole business, you, um... I've got a few things here, but I don't know, I forgot, anybody else here?
Well, you have...
Let's talk about, okay, so we have some, we have two pieces of land that are, um, in interest here, see here. There's a person that wants us to buy some piece of property, M, we've had this name before in meetings, Rory, MBAH, it's an investment company. And, um, they own a piece of land, we own two vacant lots on Taft. Now, Taft is the next street, the next street, um, east of Las Vegas. And this lot appears to be down towards the end of it. It's a vacant lot, his lot has a house on it. Might wanna ask him a question, they're just seeing if we're interested in it, we interested in the property. They paid forty-eight thousand for the house they're on, for the lot they own, in December of eighteen. Doesn't say they want to sell it, they don't say how much they want for it, um... Our organization owns a vacant piece of land on Taft Avenue. We have interest in and manage several single-family home developments in the area. We no longer believe this lot will be useful for our purposes, and we are interested in disposing of it. I'm contacting you to gauge your interest in the parcel. So... They have an email on there, I'll email them and copy you guys on it, I'll, I'll contact them, get some information on it, and copy you and Jim on it. And start some communication with them, I really have the desire to buy it.
Have you looked at the plant, the two, the partials he's talking about?
I looked at them, I made maps, I looked on it electronically, I've not looked at it in person. I was running, I was running late getting here, I didn't get it till ten till, and, but, um, I planned on driving past it. They're saying it's vacant property, but why did it sell for, the, the, the property search shows it, shows it sold for forty-eight thousand in, uh, December of eighteen. And they don't say anything what they want for it. And I might really interested in buying property, but... There's another person that wants to buy from us, um, another vacant lot we own, this one's on Huffman, okay? Uh, just west of Lutheran Church. Lutheran Church and Huffman, west of that, several lots, and I pulled it up and did the same thing, um... We've owned it since November of fifteen. We pay seven hundred and three dollars and some change a year in taxes.